Call the special call meeting of the Brookhaven City Council to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
All right, our Mayor Jay Mattes Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gebbia, District Four.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember John Park, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District One.
Present.
Okay, all present.
Apologize for the lateness of this start here. Special call meetings often happen this way. We don't, not usually this late. Sometimes we're late, but not usually this late. So apologize for the folks that we got here at seven. A, that's all I have. The approval of minutes, Marie?
Yes, we have two sets of minutes, October the 28th and November the 4th. Council work session and council work session on both of those meetings.
I move that we approve the minutes of October 28th and November 4th of 2014.
May I second?
Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes signify so by saying aye.
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 All opposed? All right.
All right, our public hearing items, beginning with number one, public hearing ordinance 2014-11-03, consideration and approval of the second reading, annexation 14-01, Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. You had your public, first public hearing on this Tuesday evening, November the 18th. You had a first read of the ordinance, which required no action on your part. This will be an action item. Mayor, you can open the public hearing, and Mr. Benson will be presenting.
Open the public hearing.
Mayor and council, I'll keep it short. Again, this is the subject property formerly, or commonly known as Children's Healthcare of Atlanta. It's comprised of 59.53 acres. Current zoning of the property, for the most of the property itself, is M. The southern portion is C1, with occupied by several commercial uses. Again, the petition came through directly from Children's Healthcare of Atlanta under a 60% annexation method. Again, based upon the total acreage, approximately 96% of the property owners that occupy that property have signed off on the petition. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Kathy?
Martha Gross.
Ms. Gross? Did you press the button on there?
The very bottom.
Also, we need to take notes when you're speaking, so just hold on a second. No, you still have to. Just press it one time. There you go.
Great, thank you. Well, we would just like to say we are very pleased to, and delighted about the annexation of CHOA, under the condition that it comes in under its current zoning and goes through the standard SLUT process, or the standard DRI process. And we think CHOA is an outstanding addition to Brookhaven and to our neighborhood, and we are very excited about the new development and whatever they decide to do. And we're excited about having Brookhaven on our side of I-85, so.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Been on the phone a lot, trying to contact our neighbors and let them know. I believe, I'm sure some of them have been contacting you, is what I've been hearing. And you know that we have two applications here. One for CHOA, one for Executive Park. As far as I'm understanding, there's no opposition whatsoever to CHOAs. Is that correct, if I'm understanding that? I wish if we can get something settled tonight, if nothing more than get CHOA annexed into the city of Brookhaven, due to the fact that they are two different, separate applications. I've not heard the first thing to say that anybody wants to stop CHOA. Matter of fact, the registered voters and citizens of Brookhaven are very much for the Healthcare Atlanta to be a part of Brookhaven. It would actually help put the name of Brookhaven on the map to be associated with a wonderful organization such as. Now, we do have two applications. Again, the first application being CHOA, second application being Executive Park. Like I said again, there's been no opposition whatsoever on CHOA. I've attended the zoning board commission, and it has flied with flying colors. They were one slight little problem. It was exempt, it was removed at the request of CHOA. CHOA is willing to split the bill where it costs nothing to the city. This is a win-win situation. And if I remember, one of my own council members telling me, maybe a month, less than a month ago, is don't follow status quo, is to be a leader. Even though I know it may step on some people's toes, that's been very helpful for us in the past, and I understand that. Even I have times, hard times to swallow this too. But we've elected y'all to be our leaders, and sometimes leaders may have to step on some toes. Or it's kind of what I think as a shame to have other leaders kind of ask us to do things. Because shame on them, not shame on us. We've elected y'all to come forward to be our leaders and not to follow status quo, not to cause any enemies. We're not here, we're one big happy family. I couldn't be happier living in Brookhaven. And we've extended all our branches to others around to show them the happiness that we have here in Brookhaven. And so with that matter said, if y'all would take it upon yourselves, remember there are two applications here. One for CHOA, which has no whatsoever resistance of being brought into the city of Brookhaven. And I hope that you look at it and pass it tonight with flying colors without being the status quo and being our leaders separately, individually, for districts one, two, three, and four, and our beloved mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
There are no others.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, you do have the applicant here.
Mayor, members of council, my name is Woody Galloway of the Galloway Law Group. I'll be very brief as well. Y'all have heard this many times, and you know what? The children has approached the city, asked for annexation, asked for rezoning. They've got 230,000 to 250,000 square feet of office uses over there, and about 17 one-story buildings. Those buildings have passed their useful life. We know there's going to be redevelopment, but we don't know what the redevelopment's going to consist of. And so we are only asking for the city to bring us in under our existing zoning. We're willing to come in under our existing zoning. We also have withdrawn our specialty land use permit for the height because we took down the building that the height was necessary for. So we are willing to come in, give you the opportunity with us to work through, develop a master plan, we'll come, bring it to you. You will control what will be at your front door. You will have the ability to approve it or deny it. And if it exceeds the DRI thresholds, we'll go through the process and deal with any conditions that they, the state, ARC, Greta recommends for any development that takes place on the CHOA site. And I don't think you can ask for any more. CHOA has also tried to address the concern about financial implications by saying that they recognize that right now, a good part of their property is non-taxable, it's tax-exempt. They anticipate that to change in the future as it is redeveloped. They expect a majority of the property to be taxable as it is developed in the future. That will add a great deal of tax base to the site, but until that time, we're willing to put up the money that pays for the services that we need to have during that first year when y'all don't have any tax revenue coming in. We'll pay our portion of that cost. We will also agree to be part of the tax allocation district that would cover those, any deficiencies in costs over the tax revenues, and do that until such time as the tax revenues meet the requirements. So we're willing to do those things, and we know we can do those things because not only is CHOA a very stable, highly well-financed organization, but they also know what their general plans are in terms of development. They know that they're going to generate a lot of revenue for the city. But they also know that they can be a very vital part of the city by providing a southern edge to the city, a gateway into the city from the south. You can have the interchange at 85, have the ability to market, sign it, landscape it with cherry trees.
Done deal.
Do all kinds of stuff. But it gives you that gateway, and gives you the ability to influence what goes on between there and as you go north into the main part of the city. It gives you that ability to make it into what Brookhaven sees as what development should be. And it just provides a great opportunity to the city. But that's all I've got up front. I'd like to reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal. Thank you.
All right, and there were no other public comments. Anybody have any questions for Woody or Marie or anybody? Marie, the one question I had was the agreement where the applicant, this applicant and the upcoming applicant would split, or would cover the costs of our service delivery until such time as the tax revenue generated by the, as yet unredeveloped property reaches the threshold where it's net revenue neutral. I know that we have an agreement for that right now. The fine details of that are still being worked on.
Correct.
And you expect us to have that soon, Monday, possibly?
Right.
I think we all, you know, trust that these, that the applicants mean what they say when they say they're going to cover these costs, and I don't think that's an issue, which I think it would be maybe a little bit hasty to consider this without having that in place, so that we can review it, and our lawyers have reviewed it, and their lawyers have reviewed it. But one issue I also did want to cover was the issue of the TAD, because there were some good questions brought up about the TAD previously by some residents, by some council members, by me, by everybody. Because there is, in case you don't know in the audience, there is a TAD in place for part of the property. And we consulted the expert on TADs, Sharon Gay, and she's not able to be here tonight to present, but she did send us an email with her take on the TAD. And I'd just like to read from that if I could. Based upon the statutory language of the redevelopment powers law, OCGA 3644-1, a tax allocation district, TAD, created by a county cannot be destroyed by annexation of the land associated with the TAD by an adjoining municipality. Once a county legislative body adopts a formal resolution approving of a redevelopment plan, creating a TAD, the TAD itself must remain in existence until such time as that same legislative body dissolves the TAD by formal resolution, which cannot occur until such time as all redevelopment costs and all tax allocation bonds associated with the TAD have been paid for, paid or provided for. You'd see OCGA 3644-12. Likewise, once a county legislative body adopts a formal resolution approving of a redevelopment plan, creating a TAD, the positive tax allocation increments association, associated with the TAD must continue to be allocated to the political subdivision, which quote, "created the district," end quote. Regardless of whether or not some or all of the area in the TAD has been annexed by another municipality. And that's, again, 36-44-11A. In light of this analysis, any TAD created within an unincorporated area of DeKalb County would remain in existence regardless of whether an abutting municipality successfully annexed some or all of the property in the TAD. Thus, even if Brookhaven were to annex some of the land in the TAD, the county would continue to collect the tax allocation increments derived from the county-imposed ad valorem property taxes associated with the TAD property for the life of the district under OCGA 3644-12. However, the city ad valorem taxes levied within this area would not go into the TAD special fund. While there is a mechanism for creating joint city-county TADs, this TAD was not created jointly, and of course could not have been unless Brookhaven had also had redevelopment powers at the time. So bottom line is, the TAD stays in effect, and the increment continues to be the county ad valorem levy only. So those issues that were brought up about how TADs and what the effect of us annexing an area, part of an area, all of an area that has a TAD existing would not be upset by our annexation, and the monies that are being generated by that development or the properties in the TAD still continue to go to the improvements that are created by that TAD. So that's, this is Sharon Gay, she's the, this is her expertise, is the creation of TADs, the explanation of TADs, and what they mean and what they do. She's with McKenna Long and Aldridge. So I feel a little more comfortable about this TAD issue, a lot more comfortable, but we still have the outstanding issue of the agreement that we haven't gotten finalized yet. I know that it's not a complex agreement, it's not a long, lengthy agreement, but I just want to say that I think that's important that we get that. All right? Sir, any question?
If anybody has any details, whether Marie or maybe Mr. Galloway, if you could just, since we haven't seen this agreement, I just want to get a better understanding of sort of how this agreement looks, and then how is it guaranteed that you continue to pay until said time? And what happens if you sell the property?
You go first?
First of all, it's going to be a special assessment district for the entire property, but how the special assessment district is described for CHOA, the hospital side, it's going to be what's called a pilot payment in lieu of taxes because the hospital property is exempt. So we couldn't create a special tax assessment district over property that is exempt, so there would be no tax to what's already not paying tax. So what you do in those cases where you have hospital authorities and other authorities similar to that, that are exempt properties from paying ad valorem property taxes, you create what's called a pilot payment in lieu of tax. To answer your question, what happens if you sell the property? That assessment remains because it's tied to the property, not to the owner. Because therefore, you know, we continue to service the property, and therefore we continue to collect that assessment. What's important to remember, now on the Executive Park side, I don't want you all to confuse the TAD, because that's for infrastructure improvement, that's separate and apart from our servicing on the police and code enforcement side. So we're looking there also at a special assessment district. Now whether that is a special tax assessment district or just a special assessment, and that's what we're trying to qualify right now for the Executive Park side, but it'll be one of the other, and it will do the same thing. Both of them will do the same thing, so depending on how it's actually titled. It will also assess the property at a pro-rata share to what the cost of the service is, so that the city will continue to receive this collection. Now, because the county collects taxes for us, and if you've noticed previous to annexing into the city of Brookhaven, you saw a stormwater utility fee that was on your tax bill, and you'll see it now as a Brookhaven stormwater utility fee. And I'm just using this as an example because in addition to your taxes, you can also see other costs for services that are billed and collected annually. Your trash sanitation, that's another good example. So the collection of these assessments or this pilot will be done on an annual basis, and it will ride with, be included in the tax bill that the property owners will receive. What the agreement is going to stipulate is how this is collected and where it's going to be collected, from which entity, which will assign the county, because we have an intergovernmental agreement for them to do that work. There will also be a provision that states that, to get us started, there will be an advancement of that fee. So the property owners will be paying in advance the first year. We'll collect that next payment at the end of the tax year of 2015. Because remember, when you annex property, you have to perform and provide services as you do for the remaining properties within your city, and the annexed property must also have the privilege to enjoy the same level of service as you provide to the remainder of the city. So that can't change, it has to be at the same level of service. The good news here is, there has been a verbal agreement, and it will be included in the written agreement that describes this advancement of pay. Now, there's a third part to that agreement, because as you know, the properties that you're considering for annexation are not 100% owned by CHOA or Executive Park. There are some parcels that are coming under what the law provides for, under the annexation law, the 60% method, that we can take additional properties. And I think this is a good point to remind the council and the public as to why there is an election to take the additional properties, because we're looking for uniformity of boundary so that we don't have a police officer out in the middle of the night trying to answer a call and hesitates because they're not sure if that particular parcel is inside the city or not. So when annexation occurs, you always want to look for uniformity of boundaries because that is a public safety issue. And then the same would be true of code enforcement, so you would want that. And that's why we're taking these properties. Now, those properties are not paying in advance, but they will be captured in the special assessment, because they will receive the same benefit that both CHOA and Executive Park are advancing in costs. What the attorney and I are working out is trying to describe a matrix, because what will happen as new participants, these participants that are not CHOA and not Executive Park, will also be paying. But they don't pay, and their payment's not collected until the end of 2015, whereby, again, the subject properties here are advancing the payment. When we get into the second year of collection, the end of that 2015, it's my expectation that CHOA and Executive Park's advancement will go down to reflect the additional properties. Now, it's not going to go down a lot, but it will go down some because it will reflect the contribution. This is not a collection or assessment of fees that removes the property taxes. The property's taxes still remain, and especially on the Executive Park side. Now, we know on the CHOA side, they don't, because there are no taxes there. And I think there's, there's some parcels there that do generate about $20,000 a year, but for purposes of this example, it's really not that much. So you have the tax bill for the property assessment, the valuation, Executive Park, and the CHOA side, that's a line item. And then on top of that will be the cost for the additional, the services for police and for code enforcement. It's important that we remain and we retain those property taxes. There's been talk early on with this application that this would be an advancement of taxes. We looked at that, I talked about that. But we can't forget the other services that we have to provide and perform for the property. Road maintenance, rights-of-way maintenance, stormwater utility. So those still go on, and the tax dollars collected will help us offset that cost. So this is expected to have a term, the agreement, for a specified period of time. It will have annual audits that will be part of it, because we'll have to watch the valuations as properties improve, the valuations of the geographic area will increase, and when that increases, then we will see more of a tax layer, property tax layer, that can contribute to the fund. So we hope that, you know, at a specific date and time in the future, could be four years, could be six years, it's really dependent upon the activity level of the land that occurs out there for development. But, you know, we could be out of this special assessment and this pilot program in four years, six years, eight years. It just really depends on the level of activity and the speed in which they redevelop the properties.
Woody, did you have anything to address Rebecca's question?
We've talked about a, basically, we've got sort of a letter of intent kind of level. We're comfortable with that. I think that these agreements are agreements that are done frequently, and so we're comfortable with that, that frankly, y'all have all the power, in the sense that y'all impose this. And we are coming in and asking, we're coming in as our existing zoning, we're going to have to come in soon to come back and go through the process of zoning. Clearly, y'all are not going to zone anything if we haven't followed through with our commitments. So we know that, so we're comfortable with where we are, and we're ready to get started. So.
I got a couple of questions for you. When do you think the bulk of the redevelopment that you want to embark upon, when will the actual, what do you estimate the time for shovels in the dirt for the major portion of your redevelopment? It's not going to be next spring, obviously.
It won't be next spring, but it's going to be in the next, I'd say, two to five years.
Right.
Because the board authorized the planning process last week. So they have authorized the planners, architects, and engineers to really start the engagement process of exactly how many square feet we need.
Right.
What we're going to do, where we're going to do it, and start coming up with plans that then, the preliminary plans will be reviewed and approved, and then ultimately we'll be coming before y'all with plans. And they have a very dire need. Those of y'all that went on the tour know that Eggleston is, really has a need for some additional clinical space in order to make, or additional, essentially bed space, tertiary space. So in order to accommodate that, there needs to be some clinical space that would go off-site. As y'all know, we're thinking about having a medical office building that would have clinical uses on the site, and that will allow Eggleston to have additional bed space to free that up. That's a very critical need, and something that, you know, as a, as a parent who has children, you know, you want Eggleston and Scottish Rite to have enough space to do what they need to do, because their work is vital for not just this city, but also this region. And really, there are patients that come all over the country. So certainly the state sends all of its major cases to Eggleston or Scottish Rite.
My heart shudders every time I see that helicopter flying.
Helicopter flying, yeah.
You just, you know what's going on, it just, yeah.
Right.
It's a great service, but it's scary, and the work y'all do is incredible. Well, my question was geared towards, we're not going to start, if we annex CHOA and Executive Park, we're not going to on January 15th, our community development department's not going to be swamped with permit applications for development, obviously.
No. And recognize that your police aren't either. We've got a full police force.
Correct.
That is, they have a minimum of two officers that are on duty at all times. So the demand on, current demand for DeKalb County Police is very low. They have five emergency calls in a year. So that's not a lot of demand, especially given the fact that they're willing to pay a substantial amount to gear up a new portion, essentially a part of a precinct, for the city that would pay for everything from cars to guns to training to whatever. So.
And my, you know, my point is, you know, we're a startup city. We're still less than two years old right now, and we have a lot of work, we've done a lot in the first year and three-quarters. We have a lot more to do next year. And I just want to make sure that our citizens understand that by approving this annexation, if that's what we do, that our staff, our city staff, our city manager, community development's not going to be swamped with work to deal with this new area we just annexed. It's something that's going to be developed over time. But we do get the benefit of extra service that will probably not be, you know, won't be utilized to capacity until, perhaps the police force might ever be utilized to capacity. But in order to have our three-minute response time, that's what our chief has said, we need to have those officers there to cover that. I know this annexation doesn't take in 85, which I think the chief is pretty grateful for as well. And I just wanted to hear from you that even though you're covering the services, that our staff won't be overly burdened in the next six months, year, with work on trying to service your area to the exclusion of other areas of Brookhaven?
Right.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
All right, thank you.
So I just wanted to clarify on this agreement, either one of you. I'm somewhat familiar with the pilot that, say, for instance, was done at town Brookhaven, which had an escalating, you know, started off at 100% TAD. Now that's where you're taking a taxable product and giving it a tax exemption. So can you just educate me?
Right, it's not the same, no.
But how does this, how does a pilot work in this kind of case? Is it a set amount each year?
Yes.
And we will? And we will determine that upfront in this agreement?
Yes, they will pay half of the fees right now, the fund that's going to be required to hire the officers, pay for their salaries, their benefits, their uniforms, and their vehicles fully equipped.
Okay, so will this be the same amount for a set term?
It is, well, that's why we have to watch it every year, and we have to see what's happening with.
The annual audit.
Correct. Because part of the cost for the startup includes the vehicles. So we won't be buying vehicles each year, but the chief does have a threshold on when he turns those vehicles and when they will be replaced. So at some point in time during the term, you know, we do expect that the vehicles will be replaced. That's why these numbers are going to move a bit, because, one, we have the contribution of the upfront cost that the other properties that are part of the 60% are enjoying that advancement and are not contributing to that. But they will contribute it through the collection of, let's just say, December of 2015, when all of our taxes are coming in. Now, for what you've just described, and I wasn't involved in the town Brookhaven, but what you've just described sounds to me like an enterprise zone whereby there is a set period of time.
It was a tax abatement through the development authority.
Correct. Right, but there's a, in that law, there's a certain number of years. I think it's the first, it's a 10-year.
They had a 10-year.
But the first five years is at 100%, and then when you reach the sixth year incrementally, you are incurring a percentage of the tax until you reach year 10, and you're at 100%.
Right.
And that 100% includes whatever the increased valuation is of the property. That's not what this is. This is a payment in lieu of taxes, P-I-L-O-T, payment in lieu of the law expressly permits this, and this is assigned to properties that are exempt from taxes, because we can't, even if we created a special tax assessment district on the CHOA land, we could do that all day long, but when we would remit the tax bill, it would be zero.
Zero, right.
Because they don't pay taxes. So you have to call out for another vehicle, which is the pilot program where they pay in lieu of taxes, and that's assigned to the property.
And what do we anticipate the term will be?
Well, the term, I'm looking at at least five years, but again, it could be, it could be less, depending on if they expedite their development.
So we may start out with like a five-year agreement, but it would then be.
It's going to have to be.
Modified on an annual audit, and who does that audit?
We're going to do that as we review the valuations of properties.
And the cost of the service.
And the cost of the services. Because, again, remember, after year one, that cost, right now at $583,000 for the five officers, the cars, the uniforms, the salaries, and the benefits, is going to go down in year two because we don't have cars. But by year three or four, the chief may be coming back to me saying, I've got to have cars. So then, it's going to have to go up. So we have to reflect that and describe that in the agreement, because it will change. In addition to that, don't forget, while they are advancing in these first few days for the service of now until the end of 2015, the other properties that make up the entirety of the annexation that are not advancing will be paying taxes. So when we collect, excuse me, they'll pay taxes, but they'll also be part of the assessment district. So remember, they have a property tax, and then on top of that, they have the special assessment. So that that special assessment will be a deduct off of their share that they've been advancing.
Just to be clear on this, does the TAD actually apply to this property?
No.
Parts of it.
TAD is only for infrastructure. It's nothing to do with.
He said parts. I'm not talking about pilot. I'm talking about, does the TAD apply to this property we're talking about on this annexation?
On the CHOA, no. My understanding from the county is they've given me documents that show Executive Park. Now, if they haven't given it to me that shows the CHOA property, then I don't have it.
Woody, did you?
I think in a sense, the part, part.
Maybe a part that's not children's, but it's somewhere else?
Along the front. Chris, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'm listening. And the, not talking, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
So let's be sure to make sure we know where that TAD is, particularly when it applies to Executive Park. But, and this is really more of a question for the commercial properties, not children's, that it's tax-exempt. But the rest of the people in this area that are not tax-exempt or in that TAD, we talked about the fact that, okay, we legally know that the tax is going to continue with this incremental tax portion of it, but what it doesn't spell out is that, or actually, that she did define that the city portion, if it is incorporated, which in our case is about 6% of the total tax bill, that city portion of the TAD wouldn't be subject to it, unless I think she referenced that potentially there could be a city-county agreement to do that.
Well, we'd have to have redevelopment powers to enter into a joint TAD.
Right. And it wasn't created that way, so it's not going to be treated that way.
So this is, you know.
So this is one of the negatives of not having a Redevelopment Powers Act approved.
Well, absolutely, absolutely it is. I mean, because of the fact that we do need to acknowledge that, and again, this is not really as big of a deal for this petition, but in Executive Park's case, that 6% granted, you know, taken across all of the commercial properties, is leaving money, you know, on the table. Now, I, that money would come to the city of Brookhaven, because the assessed value that goes into the TAD is based on the real property as it increases, and so that increased value would come to the city. And I'm just trying to think through the process, so that 6% that we got in the incremental portion, could we then divert it to pay for that 6% that's not in that TAD, that's not being held in that special reserve fund?
Divert it to who, to the TAD?
So the TAD is going to be, the Development Authority is going to use those monies to repay the bonds. Now, I contend that if you're all of a sudden losing 6% out of that allocation because incorporation, do the numbers still work for the repayment of those bonds? Or is the city going to be asked to, you know, can kick in their portion?
The city available on taxes levied within the TAD do not go into the TAD fund.
I know that, I know they don't, but I contend that the city, even though we wouldn't have an agreement with the county because we don't have redevelopment authority powers, would be willing to allow that incremental portion to continue paying for the things as defined by the redevelopment plan.
Or you could spend the money on projects that.
Yeah, I mean, we could spend the money in our own way, not have to pay it to the redevelopment of it, but the Development Authority itself is going to be short on that 6%, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, it depends on the term of the bond. If it's a 20-year bond or a 30-year bond, or they refi it, I mean, there's a lot of what-ifs on that. I don't have a full answer to your question, but I would caution you to give anything away right now, because remember, their agreement has a term, a fixed term with us. It goes away. So we will have to observe, and we will be relying totally and fully in only.
But I'm not talking about the pilot.
No, no, I'm talking about the tax digest for the geographic area.
Well, that's in perpetuity. It is what it is. It's an assessed value every year.
The pilot, the advancement of the cost to cover the city's deficit.
Yeah, but that's the pilot thing that you're talking about. I'm not talking about the pilot.
I know, but that's, when that's removed, we will be totally reliant upon the taxes that the property generates itself. So if you're giving tax dollars away, that creates a deficit for us for delivering services. So until we know that number, I would ask you to let me get you that number.
Yeah, this is one where, maybe, you know, I don't think there is an answer to this that we can, that we're going to get on the dais tonight. But it is a responsive, a follow-up question that I've sent to Sharon Gay to address this issue of that city portion, you know, if somebody floats a bond on something, they're basing it on the repayment schedule that's coming into that TAD.
Right.
And if a portion of that money is then no longer coming into that TAD, well, that's an issue that is not necessarily the problem of Brookhaven, but it is a problem for the bondholders and the redevelopment, or the Development Authority, which is DeKalb County.
Well, these are high-risk bonds, and that's why they have a high yield. And if you'll remember the presentation that Ms. Gay gave us a couple of months ago, there was a similar question that came up, is what happens if there's another economic development fallout, and there's a devaluation? And her answer was that if it's not paying at the rate anticipated to service the debt, it will be patient to wait for the return of value to the property to continue paying, because there will be a lull, that it won't be able to make the payments. But that has no liability to the city, nor even to the county, but only to the bondholders that are looking for a high return. That's why it's a high-risk bond, and it rides with the property. So they'll have to just wait a little longer to make their return.
Right. It's just, if we can get that answer from Sharon, that would be great.
All right.
And then I just wanted to clarify, the special assessment district, is that an assessment on the tax bill?
Yes, it's going to be placed on the tax bill.
Is that a dollar amount, or it's not a millage amount?
No, it's a dollar amount.
It's a dollar amount.
And it's based upon prorated acreage coverage?
Yes.
Take the total amount that you're trying to cover, total acreage, and it's a charge per acre, and then what percent of an acre does that particular business have, so they're sharing equally?
Okay, so it would be different from taxpayer to taxpayer?
Yes.
Depending on the size of their.
Correct. On average, it's looking like about a little over $300 a month on a per-acre basis.
Yeah. Okay, I'd like to just, I'll conclude here. It's been an interesting process, and I think we've done, we've done this in a fairly organic manner. Just to review very quickly, you know, the submission for a annexation came to us, and by law, we have to submit it and follow through on it. And by law, if we don't have a good legal reason not to accept it, then it could be a problem. It was exciting when we first got the call on this, obviously because of the nature of the two businesses, and it was quite an honor to us as a city. The concerns that we had as we got through it, though, it became pretty apparent that we as a city couldn't cover the cost to do it, and it was incumbent upon us not to burden, not to burden our residents with having to cover that. So went back to both the Galloway Law Group and the Morris, Manning, and Martin Group, stated the problem, and they both stepped up to the plate and said, yes, we'll make this whole, which covered a big portion of the problem. So tonight, what I've heard is that CHOA is willing to pull its request for zoning change to maintain the AM or industrial zoning requirement, and follow through with the standard DRI requirements upon project enhancement when you're ready to move forward, and also a site plan. So those were two other concerns, so now that's pretty much been addressed. But given the fact that we're still in lieu of a, waiting on an informal agreement on what Marie and the Galloway Law Group will be working on, and you think you can have that by Monday?
Yes, it's not the Galloway Group that's working on the agreement. We're working on the agreement with our independent counsel.
Got you.
The city's counsel. And we will then exchange the agreement with both attorneys representing the applicants.
Tomorrow and the next day.
Well, actually, there's three, there's another attorney, Mr. Sandler, will probably also get the agreement as well.
Well, my question is, is this a procedure that can be completed by Monday?
That's what the independent counsel has been tasked with as of, confirmed as of about 8:30 last night.
Woody, do you see any problem with that on your end?
Get us a draft on Monday, we will be able to respond.
I should get you something earlier than that. It needs to be finalized by Monday, not get you a draft by Monday.
Okay, we will absolutely respond.
Okay, so pending approval of this, I'm going to make a motion that we defer.
We're still in public hearing.
Okay, I'm sorry. Let the cat out of the bag.
Any more questions for Mr. Galloway or Marie from the council? I just want to say a couple of things, too. I've had some, a couple of more questions that were lingering answered tonight. You know, when we first, like Joe said, when we first received the application, it was, we were all very excited, because Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, being the number-one provider of children's medical services in the nation, was, it's, that's a pretty big deal, and that's a, the fact that they wanted to come into Brookhaven was flattering, it was bracing, it was, you know, it was surprising. So I think we all were very excited. Then as we started looking into it, we started seeing some of the costs, you know, I think we all cooled off quite a bit, because, and thank you to Marie for being diligent in all that, because it's, the costs are significant, and one thing that, you know, we started off this city, this wasn't a part of our plans, I mean, you know, as any city, almost all the new cities have done some annexation, and it's been, and they go in cycles, and sometimes it's a mad rush. And again, this isn't something we sought, but then we had to think, well, if it's going to cost our taxpayers, is it a good thing for the city? Probably not. Is it going to take us off our mission, which is providing paving and parks improvements and streets and sidewalks and police? You know, and if it's going to stretch that budget, it's probably not a good idea. So I think there was kind of a real hesitancy to even consider approving it. Once we got into it, we realized that the commitments were made to make this revenue-neutral for the city. That was, that took one worry off our mind. And then when we started thinking about the workload on city staff or on our police or, you know, the electeds, we found, and you heard some of that tonight, that there really is not much taxing of resources on city staff if we take in these properties. Because, I mean, one reason is there is no residential, but that may change in the future as we've had some good rapport established with some of the surrounding neighbors, and we will keep that up, because regardless of whether some of those neighborhoods want to come in or not, I don't think any of us envision a time that if there's some development going on at Executive Park or at CHOA, that we would ignore the will and the wishes of the people who live adjacent to or around the area. I think that would just be bad governorship, bad policy. So one of the things that I'd like to do as mayor is listen, and I think the council knows that, that's one of our important traits that we have, and I don't think, I don't envision any of us or anybody in the future as an elected official in Brookhaven, I don't think the citizens would tolerate elected officials who didn't listen, who were bullish and hard-headed. That's not how we do things in Brookhaven. So with the, being revenue-neutral and the cost being covered, you know, we had to do some more due diligence, and we had Richard Meehan, our Public Works Director, do a cursory survey of the area, and discovered that the major roads, being Druid Hills, Briar Cliff, and if there, if there was an annexation of some neighborhoods or some petitions to come in, La Vista, that those were all state roads, correct? And the, you know, maintenance and repair or redevelopment of those roads is really not something Brookhaven would have to be on the hook for or would really direct. So that was another kind of burden lifting, because there's a series of questions. You have police and a code enforcement officer, yeah, that's important that we are mindful of that, but there are all the other little costs that you might not think about. Also, Richard did a review of the stormwater, shape of the stormwater system over there, and the stormwater fees that will be paid by the properties in the annexation area are triple what the cost will be for the maintenance and current repair. So that's another burden eased off our mind. The roads that would be, have the responsibility of Brookhaven, they're in fairly decent shape from what Richard tells us, but they would still only represent 1.5% of the total road network in the city of Brookhaven. So 98.5% of the roads in Brookhaven are above this area, and it would be 1.5%. And with the taxes paid by the parcels that Marie spoke about, the taxes, not the special assessment, more than enough to cover those, repaving and maintenance of those roads. So when you get your mind eased by all these things, then you have to ask yourself another question. Well, that sounds good, I'd like to consider it, but is it good for Brookhaven? Is it a benefit to Brookhaven to going through this exercise? And that's perhaps the most important question, once you've answered all the concerns. And you heard Mr. Galloway talk about it being a gateway on the other side of 85. I look at this possibility, because I wasn't necessarily in favor of this from the beginning. I was at first, and I kind of backed off of it, and now that I've had some of these concerns addressed, I think it's a pretty good idea, and the benefits for Brookhaven being having the gateway, but Beaufort Highway is extremely important to the future of Brookhaven. And, you know, you've heard Mr. Boone talk about that, Joe talks about, we all know that. That's why we did a particular plan, the Beaufort Highway Improvement Plan, as part of our comprehensive plans effort. And in my mind, having an anchor with Executive Park and particularly CHOA, a jobs anchor at the south end of the city, where we have one at the north with Perimeter Summit, we'd have one at the south now as well. have one at the south now as well, the improvements that can occur because of the job base that is, will be Choa and Executive Park, the demand for housing along Beaufort Highway and the demand for new retail and new development along Beaufort Highway will only be buttressed and increased by this annexation. So when I think of what's good for Brookhaven, improvements to Beaufort Highway and improving the prospects of Beaufort Highway are crucial to the success of Brookhaven. And that's a huge benefit in my mind that would come from this annexation. And we have to also recognize that the property, much of it, is unredeveloped. It's, a lot of it's, you know, of course, you just heard the building being blown up. I don't look at my job as mayor to go seek out sources of revenue, to approve things based on revenue. But it's comforting also to know that in, you know, three, five, six, seven years, the revenue being produced compared to what the revenue is now, to me, is a huge benefit to the citizens of Brookhaven. And, you know, and we immediately get five police officers and one code enforcement officer, they're not going to be wedded or chained to Executive Park and Choa. Five new police officers for our chief to give the three-minute response time down there doesn't mean they're tied to that area. It's adding five officers to our police department. And the chief thinks he needs it, he needs it, but when you add police officers, it only expands the improvement of security. So that also will benefit Beaufort Highway and the area that's being annexed. And lastly, the cachet, I think, I mean, I hate to use these kind of terms, but for Brookhaven to have that star in our crown of Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, knowing what their mission is and knowing what they do as a father of small children, you know, I, back when I was 19-years-old, when I was trying to play football for the University of Georgia, I made the team, they let me stay. We, they used to have the strong legs run so weak legs can walk for the Eggleston Children's Hospital. And I was, had the fortunate opportunity to play in the Georgia Tech, Georgia freshman game at, down at Bobby Dodd Stadium. And part of the whole week's festivities was you go to visit the children's hospital. And it, I tell you, at 19-years-old, you gain a perspective when you walk into a hospital and you see kids with bald heads smiling, and you see, knowing they have cancer or leukemia, and you see some of the things that Joe talked about the other day, and you see children that are being poked and prodded, the staff there being so kind to them, knowing how scared children are of things like that. To have a, an entity like Children's Healthcare of Atlanta that provides that service, that is knocking on our door saying, please let us in, what kind of benefit do you think that is to the city of Brookhaven? That, that kind of organization wants to be a part of what we have here in Brookhaven. So benefits to me, I think they're off the charts. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion.
Move the public hearing first.
Then I'll make a motion.
Just a moment.
We have to take action on this.
We have to have a second read first.
Go ahead.
Orders, 2014-11-03, consideration and approval of the second read, annexation 14-01, Children's Healthcare of Atlanta constitutes the second read and requires action.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we defer decision on this until Monday on a special called session, pending approval of the agreement for financial coverage.
At 6:00 PM?
We'll make it 6:00 PM is good.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? I'll just say I want to add that that game that Georgia, we beat Tech 44 to 18 that year. Just want to let you know. All right, all in favor of the motion signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Matter's deferred till Monday at 6:00 PM. Next?
All right, Mr. Mayor, the next item is the rezoning of the property that you've just deferred, and Laura, they're not going to be able to handle that or address that since there's property not annexed, correct?
You haven't noticed the public hearing?
Right. I mean, we can have the public hearing.
I would go ahead and have the public, we don't have the public hearing.
Right. I just want to be sure they know they can act on it.
Correct.
Correct.
You can't annex it, which is true.
Right. And they can't zone it. Correct.
Would you mind explaining that clarification to me? Because I don't know anything about what y'all are talking about.
The next item...
We need to have the public hearing, but we need to...
Yeah, I understand that, but what's the issue?
Right, the next item is for consideration of the property, for rezoning of the property. But you can't, you won't be able to act on that. You can still hold your public hearing, but you can't act on that because the property is not in the corporate limits of the city yet for you to assign a zoning category. So you can hold your public hearing, and then at that point, you'll have to follow the lead on the previous case, and that is to defer it until you can address it after an annexation.
Okay.
Correct.
Go ahead and make a presentation, we'll open the public hearing. Who's doing the, you doing the public?
Mayor and Council, before we proceed, I would make a request to hear items two, three, four, and five together.
Okay.
These are all rezonings associated with the Choa site.
Okay.
And just for simplicity, I believe that would be the best method to move forward.
Okay. We'll do that. Go ahead and make a presentation.
Who's presenting?
I will. I'm just trying to get the...
Ben's going to present. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, are you opening up the public hearing for all of those items?
Yes, open it for all five, as requested by Ben.
Waiting for the site plan to get up there, so just...
Waiting on Susan.
You got a media microphone up there. Do you need, do you need that microphone moved over? Can you, you've got your media microphone, do you need that moved over, Ray?
You're not a producer.
I'll speak as loud as I can. All right, quickly going over, again, this is, we're hearing items two, three, four, and five concurrently. Two is the request from RZ 1420, RZ 1420 and SLUP 1403. Item three is RZ 1421, which is the zoning from M to C2. This is the site specifically where Piccadilly currently occupies. Number four, RZ 1422, it's rezoning to M to M. I'll go over this again with the map. Agenda number five is 1423, rezoning to C1 to C1. Regarding agenda number two, RZ 14 and SLUP 1403, as the applicant had mentioned with the initial discussion of annexation, they are seeking to withdraw both requests. The original request was the zoning from M to O and I. That's represented by the map on the bottom, which is highlighted in blue. The SLUP originally was to request for a building height of up to 200 feet. It was also inclusive of a transition from 200 feet to 120 feet as it moved towards the east, adjacent to the townhome multifamily uses with a 50-foot transitional buffer. But again, that would be withdrawn by the applicant. Agenda number three, RZ 1421, again, it's a rezoning from M to C2. As you can see on the left-hand side, the, sort of the maroonish color, that's adjacent to North Druid Hills, the C2, again, that's currently occupied by Piccadilly. The applicant feels that the C2 zoning would be more appropriate with the current uses as it exists, which is a retail function, a restaurant. Staff did recommended approval as well as the planning commission. RZ 1422, which is item number four, is the rezoning from M to M. This is covering the other properties that are currently zoned M, which is around the perimeter of the property. Again, there are no changes in the use, staff has recommended approval as well as the planning commission. Lastly, item number five, RZ 1423, it's a zoning from C1 to C1, essentially transferring the zoning entitlements of those four parcels that are on the south end at the intersection of North Druid Hills and Briar Cliff, in which, again, the uses that are existing would not be changed. Staff has recommended approval as well as the planning commission. I would note there are several conditions that are provided to the council in the staff report. Obviously, that will be taken up during the special call meeting on Monday. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Galloway, do you have anything?
Mr. Song has done a very fine job of outlining those things. Again, just to reiterate, Cho's request to O and I, thought it was appropriate because it's an office use, we don't, thought the industrial was really not very appropriate. But there is a requirement under your ordinance to have a site plan, and we don't really have a site plan. We've got a survey that pretty much is the as-built. So we'll just, we are agreeable to coming in on that as we are currently zoned, and then we'll go through the entire process in the city of Brookhaven. On the Piccadilly site, we really kind of do have a site plan on that because it is an existing building. We've got a full survey on it that has that. That's up to you. Again, we were, it's a commercial building that's an existing use, they've got a lease that continues into the future. We were just trying to recognize the existing use. But that's up to your pleasure. We can come in under the existing zoning of M or come under the C2 proposed zoning. That's to your pleasure. The piece on the south, those are pieces that, well, the piece to the further southeast is a piece that was zoned commercially in DeKalb County as a list of conditions. Those would come in exactly as they are. The ones to the west of that are also commercially zoned, and they would come in as they are. Those just happen to be pieces where we could not get the owner's authorization at the time, but they don't, nothing changes. So it all comes in under their existing zoning. So with that said, given your prior action, we know it can't happen tonight. Hopefully, we will be finished on Monday night.
Sorry to keep dragging you back.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate y'all's hard work because y'all have done a lot of work on this.
Rebecca's got some.
Do you have, does Choa own these other parcels that are M?
Choa owns all of the properties that are M that are shown in blue on the bottom drawing.
Okay.
The properties that along, are along the access road that is zoned M and to the, in the northeast quadrant, as well as properties that are the holes along Beaufort Highway, they do not own those parcels, but those parcels did sign consent, come in as they are into the city of Brookhaven.
And they just simply remain M with no request?
They remain M.
Unless we initiate a rezoning ourselves.
Excuse me?
Unless we initiate a rezoning.
Correct.
Which we might need to.
Would it be appropriate, or I don't know if you can, if you're representing them too, you have the authority to represent them?
I'm not representing them as it relates to the rezoning. We got them to initiate the annexation petition, and they're just coming in exactly the way they are, and then future development, that would be up to them. And I think the city actually thought...
If I may add, of the cases, the ones that are not in current ownership of Choa, the C1 and the remaining Ms., the rezoning has been initiated by the city.
Okay.
Yes. So essentially...
They will not be M when they come in.
They will be M. So they're going from M to M. We're just recognizing the fact that we are rezoning it, the city's initiating it.
Can we change it to something else besides M?
The difficulty associated with that, again, we don't, you would assume currently the uses that are existing are conforming to the M zoning district. By changing the zoning district itself, it may create some complications or noncompliant, nonforming issues.
Could we add a condition for them to come in? I think the only concern I have is that we know M allows sexually-oriented businesses.
And what I failed to mention, as part of the conditions, we have limited, we have excluded certain uses under those zoning districts, both M and C1, and even the C2 property, that are incompatible uses with the area, also inclusive of the sexually-oriented business uses. We have excluded those uses as part of the condition.
I didn't see that as a condition. Has that just been added?
No, it's actually part of the report.
Because I see crematoriums and gas stations and things like that.
Right. The thing is, I'll be honest, there is a lot of language. As you can see, there are some that are explicitly stated out by the actual use, and there are also uses that are stated by the actual number, referenced by the number according to the zoning district.
So that's inclusive in the number?
That is inclusive. That is correct.
We don't want anybody slipping in.
I totally understand.
Slipping in with a SLUP that we don't want, right?
Naked person in the night.
We got that covered under the condition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, any more, any question?
We have public comment.
Okay.
Dale Boone?
Hi, Mayor, City Council. As one of the residents of Brookhaven that was at the zoning meeting, Choa has met all the requirements, everything that the zoning board asked of and passed, and the neighborhood associations around are 100% satisfied with it.
Thank you.
So thank you and pass it. Thank you.
Martha Gross?
Ms. Gross, did you want to come back up?
No.
Thank you. Next?
No others.
All right.
Anything else? We'll close the public hearing.
Is there a motion?
I think the motion's out, isn't it?
Actually...
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, this is for the...
I was just asking that when you're making the motion, that you break it out into each individual agenda item.
Okay, so we got to do two, three, four, and five.
Correct.
You're going to make a motion for each? Okay.
Can I just read it? I move that we take agenda items RZ 14-20 and SLUP 14-03, annex 14-01, Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, rezone to OI and SLUP for building height increase to develop for office use, south of I-85, east of North Druid Hills Road, and north of Briar Cliff Road in landlots 153 and 156. Does that satisfy you?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You can just read the, for the next one, just read the top.
All right, public hearing?
Yeah.
1572, is that it?
No, no, no. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, just keep reading, number four.
We got to do each, you want to do a motion on each, he's talking about each item?
So you want three, four, and five?
Yes, so just do one on three, I mean, two. A motion on the one you just read.
Okay, the motion on that one would be to defer until Monday night.
Wait, hold on a second. Was that two or three that he read?
That is technically...
Number three.
Three.
So you need to move that down, Susan, to two.
Actually, the numbering is a little off from what you see on the screen, see the agenda that you have, the hard copy agenda.
Okay. So which one, which zoning one did he just, he just read the one that's...
Okay, this is actually agenda number two on the hard copy of the agenda, which is RZ 1420 and SLUP 1403.
Okay, so he just read that, so that's...
Yes, sir.
Okay. You just read the right numbers for that, so just...
Yeah. The motion stands, and I move to defer till Monday.
Is there a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
If we're deferring it.
We're just deferring. Okay, so...
Any discussion?
Yeah, just as a point of clarification, because I hear rumblings, the discussion here is that, yes, we understand the applicants asked for withdrawal or willing to withdraw the rezoning.
Can't act on it.
We can't act on that until this property is actually annexed and, so this is also being deferred until the Monday night meeting.
Simply technicality. Okay.
So there's no, do we have a second?
I second it.
All right, discussion? All in favor of the motion for deferral signify somebody saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Okay, next, I'm going to call it number three. Okay, public hearing, 1572, RZ 14-21, annex 14-01, Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, rezoning to C2 for open public hearing.
No, we already, we had the public hearing for all three of those. When I opened the public hearing, we had two, three, four, and five as a public hearing.
Okay.
All right.
Now we move on to number four.
We're going to defer that. You need to make a motion on that one.
Uh, the...
He needs to make the motion.
Is the motion to defer?
All right.
Yes. I move to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
Did it date certain?
To Monday night, 6:00 PM, special called meeting.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to defer till Monday at 6:00 signifies that by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Point number four, public hearing, 1573, RZ 14-22, annex 14-01, city of Brookhaven rezoning to M to maintain existing, don't do that to me. Where were we? There it is. Thank you. To M to maintain existing use, south of I-85, east of North Druid Hills Road, and north of Briar Cliff Road in landlots 153 and 156. Correct, Ben?
That is correct, sir.
I move to defer till Monday evening, 6:00 PM, special called meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to make clear that we, again, we had the public hearing for all three, two, three, four, and five, just a second ago, and it was closed after no more comment was made. All in favor of the motion signifies somebody saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, next.
Okay, number five, public hearing, RZ14-23, Annex 14-01, City of Brookhaven rezoning to C1 to maintain existing uses and conditions, south of I-85, east of North Dreward Hills Road, and north of Briar Cliff Road in land lots number 153 and 156. I move to defer until Monday evening, special called, 6:00 PM meeting.
Second it.
Any discussion? All in favor of a deferral signifies somebody saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it's deferred. Now, we're number six, we need to open the public, we need to read it and then-
Item number six, ordinance 2014-11-04, consideration and approval of a second reading, annexation 1402, Executive Park. This does constitute the second reading. You need to open the public hearing, please.
Public hearing is open. Ben, did you have a presentation?
A quick presentation. Again, this annexation 1402 is associated with Executive Park. It's comprised of 106.49 acres, in land lots 153, 154, 155, 156, and 18th District. Thank you.
All right. Comments?
Dale Boone.
Mayor, actually, the applicant would go before the-
Okay, yeah. Where's, is the applicant here? There we go.
Thank you.
No.
We don't need, well.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Carl Westmore, 3343 Peachtree Road. A lot of these are the same issues, obviously, that you've already discussed. I don't want to be respectful of your time. We, like Choa approached the city, we have, I think, worked and responded in good faith to all of the questions, working with Ms. Garrett primarily, to address the cost issues that she talked about. Just to quantify that, the figure that we were given that Executive Park would be responsible for half of what we are told to be a $583,000 first-year cost. That would be split between Executive Park and Choa, not the other parties that are, owners that are part of the annexation. And we have agreed to pay that upfront. We look forward to trying to resolve the agreement with regard to the special assessment district and exactly how that payment is made and credited between now and Monday. Again, I think it's fairly straightforward. The difference here is that Executive Park obviously is a tax-paying entity. The property taxes are paid currently on all of that. I think there's been sufficient discussion of the TAD. I'll be glad to talk a little bit more about road improvements when you call the zoning case. But again, we have been working with the city. I think we've satisfied all the requirements that we've been given and look forward to resolving that in writing before your meeting on Monday.
Thank you. Dale?
Mayor, City Council, I do miss that Georgia Tech and Georgia JV game. We've been trying to speak with a lot of concerns, Executive Park, offering all of branches to see exactly what the hood-up is. And I guess I'm going to have to just reiterate, it's a piece of property with no registered voters. It's a property that looks like it's going to play a major role for the city of Brookhaven. It's also a property, like I'm going to have to, don't sound like I'm repeating myself, I'm going to have to reiterate and make my point very clear. You are of our leaders, and I'm very proud of y'all. And I do know that we have colleagues, we have friends, high places, low places, but there becomes a time where we are neighbors, and we are Brookhaven. You've heard that phrase many, many of times. And I'm looking to y'all to kind of lead us to what is beneficiary for Brookhaven. Again, our only borders left open is to the south of us. Please look at this as 20 years, 30 years, 50 years down the road, when none of us are sitting on city council, when none of us are no longer involved in activities, the city and the city area that we're leaving behind. We need the space. We need the income. And like you said, I would like to stint a volley branch too for some of them that's in La Vista Hills right now. Brookhaven is a very nice place to live. If we could have invitations to this Brookhaven Christmas lighting coming up, for them to get to know us, because, you know, all once, three years ago, we were all strangers. We never knew each other. And then, once we all started rolling up our sleeves and working for the same agenda of Brookhaven yes, Brookhaven no, yes, we were two different groups, but you know something? Each of the groups knew each other. And we show that respect to the Brookhaven no and the Brookhaven yes. So maybe if we can get something going to, maybe to invitations to people from La Vista Hills and such as to come over, maybe we'll see less resistance as the annexation process goes along. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Martha Gross.
Gross?
Because he doesn't want to hear what you have to say.
I do need notes for this. Essentially, I just want to invite you to consider the TAD issue, a couple of issues about Executive Park. But the first one is the DRI. It's my understanding that those restrictions expire in two and a half years, roughly, and we'd like to recommend that they be extended for the next 10 years. DRI restrictions are only in place for 10 years at a time. So we're not sure, the Atlanta Regional Commission, Jonathan Turley can probably tell us, is it because you need a new DRI study done, or can those conditions simply be rolled? So that would be question number one. Number two would be, well, making sure that there's a new Greta study done. That's something that the Developers Council did agree to do. And when the Greta study is done, that the ensuing traffic mandates, at least, the required part of traffic improvements, become part of the new conditions. And I think you could do that with some letter agreement as part of the zoning or something along that line. But the more important issue is the TAD. You did have a very nice comment, Mr. Mayor, about McKenna Long and Aldridge's research, which was excellent. But I just want to read back to you the piece, I think you said, which is that a municipality can dissolve a TAD with a vote, but not before all redevelopment costs and all tax allocation bonds associated with the TAD have been paid or provided for. And my concern is that it's my, I don't think any of us knows enough about the status of this TAD, but it's my understanding that no real plan is in place. And by plan, I mean that you take the infrastructure improvements that are supposed to be executed with the TAD, and you put them out on a plan with costs associated with them, and then you prioritize those projects. To my understanding, that has not happened. It's also my understanding that a bond has not been floated. Therefore, if that's the case, the city council can go ahead and buy vote, four people on the council can do away with the TAD, probably. That's the part I think your council might want to look at. The other part is that, the other thing is that there was an LCC study, which is the Living Communities Coalition. They looked at what TADS throughout the history of Georgia have worked well, and they've only been around since 1992 or so, so it's not a long history. But there's roughly 27 TADS in place around the state. And they wanted to say what TADS work and what don't and why. And they determined that one of the number one reasons, and I'm happy to give you the study, is when there's a disconnect between a county that floated the TAD and a city, and how you're going to prioritize projects. So if the city says, we really need this done, and the county says, yeah, well, maybe, maybe not, maybe we'll do something over here, there could be a little bit of infighting, which is why a solid plan with the projects, the costs, and the priorities in place would avert that. But we don't have that, to my knowledge, unless someone can produce it. So I think that's something to consider. And then the last one, which I don't know the answer to, but I know there's a question mark, has to do with the school tax issue. And it has something to do with the date of the TAD, and there was an issue about whether school tax portion of the TAD could be put into it de jure by mandate. And that was taken to the appeal to the Supreme Court. And the referendum happened after that, in which they said, yes, it can. But it's my understanding, and I'm not a TAD expert, but I do invite you to look into this with your council, is that now it's a voluntary school tax contribution. It has a little bit to do with the date this TAD was put in place and the date of the referendum. So there's some things that you might want to look at there to determine whether you might have a litigation on your hands, like they did in Fulton County, on the Bolton Tax District, and on the Belt Line on that tax district. So it's about the dates and the referendum and making sure you have that straight. So-
I think that the Atlanta lawsuit with Atlanta Public Schools was an agreement, it was over, an agreement that they had had in concert with the TAD, and the litigation was over one side, not living up to the bargain on the agreement they had.
Are you talking about the Bolton one?
The Belt Line.
No, the Belt Line. Well, yeah, but it also has something to do with the dates of the referendum, because the other lawsuit that's, is that Bolton redevelopment, where Edens was going to put in the Public Shopping Center over on Bolton Road and Marietta Boulevard and that district, and they were going to use TAD financing to do that. And there was another lawsuit about that. So I'm inviting you, it's a little complicated, I'm not a TAD expert, but just to look into the dates, the referendum, because the lookback comes to a certain date and not another, and that kind of a thing. So-
I agree. There are some, yeah, that thing, we wanted, we wanted to take that out when we built this thing, but evidently it's holding the roof up.
I would love to shave some of that drywall off or something. Just make it slimmer.
The, I have some facts on that, straight from the DeKalb County Commissioner, that there is a plan. There's actually a very large plan that was done about the costs on that TAD and projects spelled out. And the applicant may know the details of that, but I agree that that's something that we'd want to consider. But there is a plan, and it does spell out all the uses of those.
Ask him to send it to you.
Yeah, Carl, are you in a position to do-
I did, I did.
Okay. Carl, can you address those issues?
We'll have to do an open records request. But the other part was, that was confirmed, at least from the DeKalb County Commissioner, was that the school did not participate in this TAD. And has evidently, DeKalb County School Board hasn't participated in any TADS in DeKalb County. So that issue's not going to come into play for this.
Not surprised.
I've got, actually, I've sent you, and I just gave Ms. Garrett a copy of the DeKalb plan and map for their TAD. And I've talked to Ms. Gay about it, at least as much as you have, I think. And the answer is, it is a creature of DeKalb County. It can't be affected by the city of, city of Brookhaven. It stays in effect. Any funds raised to this point, I think only $250,000 have been raised through the tax increment, which is hardly enough to even do a study. But they've got to be spent within the TAD boundaries, whether that's city of Brookhaven or whether that's DeKalb County. And I didn't talk about Greta in the notice of decision. I was going to wait and do that in connection with the zoning case next. But again, I don't think, one of the big concerns and the reason I think the TAD has been brought up is there was this assumption that perhaps it was the, you know, golden goose that was going to fund all of these road improvements that were referenced in the DRI. Well, the DRI imposes two sets. It imposes those in Attachment A, which is, I was going to say in a few minutes, are the responsibility of the developer under the DeKalb zoning conditions, which we are not asking to change. The city's got no obligation at all for that. Those on Attachment C are those for which state and federal funding would be available if approved by Greta, but they are, and they are the more grandiose, if you will, traffic improvements. But they are not the responsibility of the county, or the city, or the TAD. They have nothing to do with the, it is what people in Greta refer to sometimes, I think, as a wish list. It's got nothing to do with an obligation that carries over to the city as a result of the annexation or the zoning of this property. If the property goes back for rezoning, you talked about Choa having to go through a DRI, obviously, if they try to get zoned, if Executive Park goes through any kind of change, although we're not asking for it now, then Greta and ARC have the right to re-review and reissue a study. The 10-year period that was referenced has to do with the 10-year period within which Greta and ARC have to make a decision on the use of state and federal funding for the Attachment C projects. The conditions, that the obligations that Executive Park has to make the road improvements in the Greta report continue on, and they do not expire. So I hope that's responsive.
Thank you.
So what expires? In 10 years, then? I mean, what's the downside?
I'll read it to you. In the notice of decision, subject to the conditions set forth in Attachment A and Attachment B, those are the project conditions. So you've got to do those. And again, those are the responsibility of the developer. Greta will approve the expenditure of state and federal funds for the improvements listed in Attachment C. Again, those are the more grandiose ones. The need for the approval, that is, the approval to use state and federal funds, will terminate and be of no further force in effect after 10 years, unless you have issued a permit for construction of any part of the project. If you issue, you know, a permit to do anything in Executive Park within 10 years, then that is satisfied.
Okay. So do you plan to issue a permit within the 10 years?
Well, I would certainly expect that we would. It's already zoned, and it was zoned in 2009, so there are several years remaining within which I would certainly expect a permit.
The clock run from 2009, or does it run from when you're?
2009.
So it only requires the issuance of a permit?
Correct.
Okay. So, but if you missed that 10 years, and then you issue your permit, what is lost is their commitment for state and federal funding to do halo coverage.
Well, I think that the, they would still have the right to approve, and you would have the right to request state and federal funding for anything on Attachment C, but you're not obligated to make any of those improvements.
Mm-hmm. Well, we're not obligated to make it the way you explained it here, too. But something is lost if there's a terminate, if there's a sunset clause.
Well, again, and I'm happy to let Ms. Garrett or anyone else respond on this, but frankly, I've not ever seen this happen, that the need for approval will terminate, and that, again, approval for Greta to approve state funding, if the local government, in this case, Brookhaven, has it, has, unless you have issued a permit for the construction of any part of the proposed plan, that is, Executive Park redevelopment, prior to the end of the 10-year period, which would be 2019.
Richard, do you have something you want to add?
Yeah, just to clarify, that on those Attachment C, basically, those are like, he said, they're kind of like Greta's wish list, the projects that they would like to see the region do as part of this DRI. Basically, what that 10-year sunset is, is in issuing the DRI, basically, those are obligations for the local regions. And in looking at the list attached, not all of them are within Brookhaven. I think only two of the eight projects are within Brookhaven city limits. The rest are within DeKalb or State of Atlanta. But basically, after 10 years, what it's saying is that city, Greta cannot make the cities do any of those projects if no permit has been issued. So it's a benefit to the city that they're not, or the local region, the city, the county, that they're not obligated to do those projects after 10 years. But the Attachment A, as he mentioned, the Attachment A conditions, they're attached to the property and the rezoning, they're there forever, no matter-
Those are the zoning conditions.
Those are the zoning conditions, and those are there forever. Those go with the property. Those never expire.
That clarifies. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. All right. So we're on number six now, is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
Second reading.
And we're already in the public hearing, correct?
Correct.
Yes, I believe we still have speaker cards remaining.
Okay.
Not for this item.
Okay. Okay. No more comments on this, item six, close the public hearing? All right. Is there a motion for number six? We have to read it first, please.
Correct. Ordinance 2014-11-04, consideration and approval. Ordinance 2014-11-04, Annex 14-02, Executive Park. This constitutes the second reading, and it is an action item.
Based upon our decision with Choa for approval of the final agreement on Monday, Carl, do you see any problem in handling Monday as a deadline date? Then I will move to defer action on this until Monday night's special called session at 6:00 PM.
Is there a second?
I'll read the ordinance.
Yeah, read it.
Okay. Ordinance ORD 2014-11-04, consideration and approval of ordinance, Annex 14-02, lots 153, 154, 155, 156, of 18th District, Executive Park, 18th District, DeKalb County.
I think you have to, I think number six was 1104, consideration-
That's what I just said. So I just read that. It's highlighted up here on this monitor.
All right. Next item, public hearings, RZ 14-24, CW Non LLC rezoning to ORC, C2, and OI to maintain existing zoning entitlements and uses southeast of I-85, west of North Druid Hills Road, northwest of Briar Cliff Road, and north of Sheridan Road in Landlots 153, 154, 155, and 156. We will need to open the public hearing, and I believe Mr. Song will want to collapse some of these into one discussion.
Well, if it's the desire of the council, we could go ahead and add items seven...
Through 12, 11?
Seven through 11.
11?
Seven through 11. That is correct.
For a public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing for items seven through 11. Go ahead, Ben. Do you have a short presentation?
Okay. Yes. Just to make a quick presentation, item number seven, which is RZ 14-24, again, this is sort of what we preliminary discussed through the annexation process. It's the item that's shown in brown. That's the portion of Executive Park, or better known as the park at Druid Hills. This is the area of land that went through the DRI in 2009 that was rezoned by DeKalb County at the same time as well. It's broken up into four different parcels. Mainly, the key point is that it's going to be a mixed-use development, consisting of hotel, office, residential, commercial, retail uses. In addition to that, they did allow for a single building, up to 12 stories, and up to approximately 200 feet in height. Our number eight, which is RZ 14-25, that's the C1 portion that you see on the bottom right-hand corner at the, you could say, the northwest quadrant of North Druid Hills and Briar Cliff Road, which is encompassing of Lowman's Plaza, as well as Chevron Gas Station. Those are existing C1s. Again, for all the rezonings that we're reviewing today, these are the existing zoning districts that we are transferring the zoning entitlements into the city. There are no requests to change the zoning district itself. So that goes for the same in C1, which is item number eight. Item number nine is RZ 14-26 and SLUP 1404, better known as Aspire Northwood Hills Apartments. As you can see, that's the ONI piece to the north. It's the two-thirds of that property that's highlighted in ONI. It's a proposed apartment building that was approved through DeKalb County through a SLUP. The ONI is existing. All we're asking, or the applicant is asking, is to transfer the zoning entitlements. Item number 10, RZ 14-27, is to account for, and actually, this rezoning is based upon the petition of the city, it's accounting for the remaining ONI properties, which is currently existing of SunTrust Bank, Bank of America, as well as the Courtyard by Marriott Hotel. Again, the zoning will not change. We're transferring the zoning entitlements associated with those properties. RZ 14-28, that is actually specifically for the Pakenstak development that I had described. Again, no changes. It's the existing use that would transfer over to the city. Staff has recommended approval of all the rezoning requirements, as well as the planning commission. Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on items seven through 11?
Dale Boone?
Applic, yeah, yeah. You sure?
Yeah.
All right. Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Dale.
As a resident of Brookhaven who attended the zoning meeting, we're satisfactory with the commission boards of approval, and we consider passing, it's no problem. We're excited to have Executive Park inside the city.
Thank you. Mr. Westmoreland, did you have anything you wanted to add, or any questions for Mr. Westmoreland?
I just, again, Carl Westmoreland, I'd just like to reiterate for the record, we are transferring over the same conditions. In addition to the zoning conditions, there is a private agreement that goes somewhat beyond the conditions between the owner of Executive Park and the La Vista Park neighborhood. And we have agreed to re-execute that, and that would continue on. So I just want to be sure everyone understands that.
The agreement made with the neighborhoods contiguous, which is La Vista Park, is going to be continued, that's part of the...
Exactly.
Okay, you're bringing that over. All right.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Are there people here from La Vista Park? Okay, thank you.
All right.
I hope that's reassuring.
All right. Any more comment cards?
Oh, good.
Oh, you got, okay.
I don't have a comment. The applicant for number seven, which is for Regency Retail Partnership, it's the property in red. We are asking that the property be zoned as it is, with conditions and entitlements in DeKalb County, and that just be brought over. And we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
So there's a fresh markets coming out here?
Maybe.
Okay.
There's been conversation.
All right. Okay, is, we'll close the public hearing if there's no more comment. Okay, close the public hearing. Is there, need to be some reads? Marie?
Excuse me?
These are all action items, need to be read?
Correct.
Okay, where the, I don't see the term "read" on it. Second read or first read or anything.
Well, these are...
It's called action items.
They're action items because they're rezonings.
Okay.
All right.
All right, so we need a motion on all seven through 11. You want to do them individually?
Yeah, I'll just got to do it by reading the case number.
Thank you.
Okay. So I'm, we'll move that we defer till Monday night, special call 6:00 PM meeting, RZ 14-24, Annex 14-02. The RZ 14-25, Annex 14-02, check me on this, Ben.
I believe we're going by individually. So the first case is RZ...
Motion for each item, for seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
Okay, you want to set them up?
Seven, eight, nine, 10, 11.
Thank you. I thought I would expedite. Okay, I move that we defer RZ 14-24, Annex 14-02, until Monday night, 6:00 PM special call meeting.
Is there a second?
Second. Thank you, John.
Question? All in favor of the deferral, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item, eight?
I move that we defer public hearing Z14-25, Annex 14-02, until Monday evening, 6:00 PM special call meeting.
Is there a second?
Second. Thank you, John.
Question? All in favor of the deferral, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Next item, eight?
I move that we defer public hearing Z14-25, Annex 14-02, until Monday evening, 6:00 PM special call session.
Is there a second?
Wait, we're not deferring the public hearing. We're, the rezoning.
Oh, well, no, it's all...
It's fine. He stated the correct case.
He did, he did. Okay.
I got you. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. No, that's right. That was, because that's Z14-25. The previous one was Z14-24.
Correct.
Go ahead. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the deferral, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, number nine?
Further move that we defer RZ 14-26 and SLUP 14-04 until Monday evening, 6:00 PM special call session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
John, you're learning fast.
Yeah, that's good. He wants to get there.
Better get in the minutes.
10.
I further move that we defer RZ 14-27, Annex 14-02, until Monday, 6:00 PM special call session.
Second.
All in favor of, I mean, discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
And lastly, I move that we defer RZ 14-28, Annex 14-02, until Monday night, special called session at 6:00 PM. Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Excellent.
Last thing, we have a budget briefing.
Yes. Mayor and council, we will hold budget hearings on December the 2nd and December the 16th. Just wanted to give you just a few highlights. We're anticipating our revenues are going to be up in the $23 million range. We're still qualifying those numbers. And in addition to that, we're looking at a little over $6 million in anticipated host dollars for the 2015. So we'll be hovering right at $30 million in our budget. That's what it's looking like right now. And we'll, of course, have exact numbers for you when we get to December the 2nd.
Any questions? Okay. Did you, no question? Okay. And can you forward by email some, no, yeah, never mind. We'll talk about it later. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sit down until I say this, until it's done. All in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.